For our budget for obviously calendar year 2018. I will then turn this over very quickly to the manager roll off and.
I think I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna turn it right over to Schenck and Associates to give our 2016 audit report. And Ms. Larson has put together a list of items that I believe we can easily get done by seven o'clock. You can just look at the agenda and kind of get an idea. A lot of it's gonna depend on how many questions you have regarding the audit. We get the auditors here once a year and I think Tom wants to make some introductions as well.
Hey. I'm Tom Carmen. I've been the partner on the job for a number of years now. Greg Patel, Greg manages the daily field work for the audit. And we have John Trautman. John is here, he will be taking over as the partner on the job because I am going to be retiring the beginning of January.
Good man.
Good for you.
Congrats.
So nice to meet all of you.
Hey Jim.
So it'll be John next year, filling the role of Tom. So, Tom, if you want, I just wanna just go through the highlights and everything?
Yeah, and I think we'll do this the way we have been. If you have any questions, feel free to jump right in and ask, because as Mark said, you know, this is your chance to ask questions and, you know, it's important that you as management of the city understand, you know, the various documents that we have. Most of my comments will be on the management communication document. It does include a lot of summary financial information, but there were a couple of other documents that were issued as a result of the audit. The main document is the annual financial report that does include our independent auditor's report on your financial statements. And once again, we are issuing an unmodified opinion on the financial statements of the city. Basically indicates that all the information that's required to be included in that document under the accounting standards has been included and there are no exceptions or omissions of information. And it fairly states the financial condition of the city for the 2016 year end. Essentially the same report that you've always received. We also issued a report on your compliance with laws and regulations related to federal and state funding that the city received. And we are issuing an additional auditor's report on that document indicating that there are no compliance items that were required to report to the city as a result of that, reviewing those federal and state grants that are applicable. So essentially, that's the best report that you can receive on your grant awards. Moving to the management communication. The first few pages of that are just standard letter from us as auditors to you as management of the city outlining our responsibilities as auditors, your responsibility for the financial statements, standard communication that's, that we annually issue. If there's any questions that anyone has on anything in the letter, I can try and answer that. Otherwise, I think we probably want to start on page five, which is the summary of fund balances. And what we have on pages five and six, what are known as the governmental fund balances. These are essentially all your operations other than your utilities or other business type operations that the city is responsible for managing. So it includes the general fund at the top of page five, the city's general operating fund. And what you'll see here is the, your overall general fund balance did increase about $400,000 compared to the prior year. The number that you typically like to focus on is the unassigned balance, which that was 8.4 million compared to 8.5 in the prior year. So it did go down slightly, basically due to some cash advances that are made out to other funds that wouldn't necessarily be available for, for spending into the subsequent year. The balance that you are maintaining, the $8.4 million, that equates to just under 20% of your annual budget, where your fund balance policy wants you to be somewhere in the area of 16.7%. So your balance is slightly in excess of, you know, what your minimum policy is. And I think most bond rating agencies, they, even though you have a minimum balance, they like to see you somewhere in the 20 to 30% range for your balance. So you're, even though you're slightly in excess of your policy limit, you're right about where, where those outside parties like to see you. Then going down to special revenue funds on that page, these are a lot of your grants, special purpose operations, those types of things. And you can get fluctuations from year to year just based upon what programs or initiatives you had operating during a particular year. Couple of balance, couple of funds that do have deficit balances, but there's nothing that we see at this point in time that would be overly alarming for any of those balances. It's just, most of those should be temporary situations. Over on page six, top of the page, your debt service fund balance, it's just money that you have aside for future debt payments, followed by the various capital projects funds that you have. And this is probably where we want to look at, probably the biggest challenge that we'll, from a financial standpoint, that we'll be facing the city going forward is, as opposed to the other funds, where we looked at the general fund, special revenue funds, your capital projects funds do have some deficit balances in them, which essentially means that, at this point in time, those funds have spent more than they have resources available to cover the spending. So what ends up happening is, some other fund needs to temporarily advance them money. What we, what the city had been doing is, for the past several years, in order to balance those funds out, that money was essentially coming from your TIF district number seven, because it had a substantial balance there. With the closure of that fund, you are going to need to identify some alternate funding sources to cover those. Your general fund would have the money to do it, but essentially what that would do is, it would basically drain your general fund. And I will tell you that there was a community that, that I've worked with, and it's a, it's a fairly substantial community, that was in the same situation. Their general fund went down to about $15,000 for a community of 30 some thousand people. Their, their bond rating dropped like a rock, basically putting them in a position where they really weren't able to borrow anymore, because they were, they were kind of bordering on junk bond status at that time, because there wasn't confidence in the borrowing community that they had sufficient reserves out there. So it's going to be, and I think we've talked about this the last couple of years, it's going to be important to identify probably two things. The major deficits are coming from your special assessment fund and some of your TIF districts. It's our understanding that with your special assessment fund, you've implemented a practice now where you are issuing debt to pay for these projects, and then when there are repayments back on the previous projects and repayments on current projects, you'll pay off that debt and rebuild this fund. So you do have, you know, a plan in place to take care of that balance, which is what you want to do. As far as the TIF districts, the biggest thing there is going to be making sure that you look at the districts that do have these deficits, and even the districts that are in a positive situation, you want to look at, what is the future outlook for those? Are they going to continue to generate or have deficits over their life, which if that would be the case, you need to develop a financial plan as to how you want to take care of that. You know, you could have, and I think some of these districts where what you're looking at is over time, just based upon performance and as years go by increments that are being generated, should pay those deficits down. But you could have some of these where they may not generate sufficient revenues to pay all of their costs. And what you want to, what you want to do as part of your financial planning going forward is to say, what is the likelihood of that happening? And do we want to implement a plan as time goes by to look at financing that? Or do you want to look at just letting these run their course and see where they end up at the end of their lives? Yes?
Question. So in other communities where this may be the case, do they like halt issuing or creating TIFs until that is addressed?
The way you need to look at it is, each, each district needs to be reviewed based upon its own merits. And a lot of times what happens with these, and you're by no means alone in this situation. There are a lot of communities out there that have these same things. At the time the district was created, there were, there were projects that were done. It was the anticipation that there was going to be development that would occur to help pay these back. In a lot of places, there still is the potential for the development, because the projects were done, you do have available land for most of these. It's just that the development hasn't occurred at the rate that you had hoped it would occur. So that's where you need to look at almost each one individually to see what is the potential both now and going forward for each of these districts. When you're looking at creating a new district, that would be another one where you still want to look at, what is the potential for that project? Does it make sense to do? You certainly wouldn't want to look at it and say, because we have some districts that aren't performing the way it was expected when they were established, we don't want to do any new ones until those are taken care of, because that could, that could limit you with future development potential. So each one kind of needs to be looked at individually. But it's like, I think, we're kind of recommending that at this point in time, the ones that have the significant deficits, just to take a look at those and see, you know, your best estimate of what you think the future is going to hold for those.
Yeah, the main takeaway there is really to try to be proactive, instead of waiting until you're faced with the end or the closure and then reacting. So the answer, we don't know, and maybe you don't know either, but just start being proactive and looking out in the future and seeing how things are gonna do. Because again, like Tom said, a lot of these TIFs could change in the future, but you don't know what the future brings.
Most of these are industrial park TIFs, to the degree they're PEGOs. You know, the negatives for the PEGOs are more in the $10,000 range, and those are really our initial costs upfront. Those will be paid off relatively soon. The ones with the aviation business park, the city center, Southwest Industrial Park, Industrial Park number three, those are significant ones where selling land and getting development is the key to success with those. And those are the ones, as Tom said, have been on the slower side. And then the other one that, that jumps out at you as being the biggest negative is the special assessment fund. But there is a plan to, to turn that around and, and that's working, because this year, all of our new special assessments are getting borrowed for, so it'll be paid for with general obligation and they're funded as opposed to not being funded.
Trina, do you keep track of those special assessments that, you know, what's due this year, what's due in 18, 19, 20, et cetera? Because we do go out quite a few years on some of those personal property tax bills for, or the personal assessments. And if you, we do have that information, is that available, just out of curiosity, when things are due and when we anticipate to bring that balance down?
We do track them. Special assessments can go out to a maximum of 15 years here at the city. We have projected a cash flow analysis and are anticipating to come to a point, a neutral cash position, probably around 2020, 2021 is where I would have, I anticipate that.
Do you guys look at that then, taking that into consideration that we do allow payments on special assessments out so many years?
All, all that is included in, in all of your financial records, and there are details on all those. The, the biggest reason that you have the deficit is essentially a cash flow situation, where you do the project in this year, and you allow people, as Trina said, up to 15 years to pay. Well, you've put the money out front, but you're not going to get paid back for a number of years. You'll get, you're gonna get 1/15th of that every year.
It's kind of like a bank, you take a home loan, you know, 30-year home loan, you get the money upfront to pay the owner off or the buyer off, but now you're paying the bank an installment.
Yeah, so that's what happens. So what, you need to just get back to the point where you've collected on a lot of those initial assessments, where you've had the upfront cash, and then once you get that money back, you'll have cash in this fund to fund future projects. So it's, it's essentially a timing issue, but it, it shows up as, as kind of a negative in your financial reports, because most of how governments account for everything is cash in and cash out. So if you've got cash that went out, then that's, you don't have that to spend on anything else.
Right. And I think you addressed that a couple of years ago in one of our audits, and we, we changed how fast we're getting the bills back out, remember on street projects and that, so that, because we were three, four years out before we even got the bill to a homeowner. Now I think we're within the calendar year of, or the year after the project, they're already being assessed. So that's brought money, more generated more revenue back into the fund than we used to have. So we need to continue that.
Our, when our volume increased, when we started doing that, it exacerbated the problem that we had. Now that we're financing them on the go, in theory, if we stopped doing street special assessments, this problem would be eliminated in zero to 15 years, because to the degree people take the 15-year plan, they'd be paid off. But the problem is, we have kind of a, it's, it's a negative pyramid scheme, and you, you can't build on each other, we're actually building debt on each other.
Right.
Trina stopped that, that bleeding as a result of Tom's recommendation that we, we do something about it, the council changed the policy. So you can see that we, it increased in the past year, and I, one of the first things I talked to Tom about, but we've got a plan that we will eventually grow out of that. And we should get ourselves to the point where, where, what did you call, it would be like a revolving loan fund, where the loan balance, the balance of the fund would be more towards zero rather than being on, on the negative. And we just did so many, we got, we got ourselves in, we got ourselves in a hole, but fortunately, we're digging ourselves out. And that's obviously the biggest, the biggest negative on this whole list, so that one's got to get addressed first. We can live with the 10 and 20,000 negatives, because we've got funds, but that 5 million, that's a big, that's a big hole that we got to fill.
It looks like TIF 23, 25, and 26 come up to about the same amount as that, special assessment deficit collectively.
That goes back to Mark's comment, that most of them are industrial parks, so as we sell land off and get development.
Land rich, cash poor.
We've had limited sales over the last eight, nine, 10 years, it's been very limited.
That's, that's typically what happened, and that's why I say, you're, you're not alone in having this occur in your community. You go back to that period of time when the economy was really booming, and there were communities all over that were either building or expanding their business parks, because there was a demand for that. And then it almost just suddenly stopped. So when you're sitting here with, with property that's ready to go, but you don't have any buyers for it, but you still have the debt outstanding, then, you know, that, as you said, you've got substantial amounts of investments in land.
We built up our inventory.
Yeah, you got like $7 million of land, which if you could sell all that immediately, a real big chunk of your problem here would go away. But you have to, you have to wait until that, that occurs. Because the, the other thing, and it doesn't show up on, it doesn't show up on this page as far as these deficits, but you, you do have two other operations that also have a deficit cash situation. Your, your industrial park fund, with their, once again, you have a large investment in land, but you have a deficit balance of, I think it's a little over $2 million in that fund. And your golf course has a deficit of about $800,000. The remainder of your utility or business type operations are pretty much, they either have positive cash balances, or they're pretty much on a breakeven basis. So, so those are fine, but there's, in addition to this approximately $10 million that you have here borrowed out the funds, there are other funds that, that are taking about another $3 million.
Any additional questions on?
Looks like I came in at a really good time with all these somber faces.
The next few pages in the document, just going through some of the utility operations, main ones on the next few pages, water, sewer, and stormwater utilities. Basically those operations, much in, in good financial condition. Essentially the, the debt that you have outstanding, the revenue bond requirements basically make you keep your rates up to where they should be, so you can satisfy your debt payments. So you really don't have any issues with any of those operations. Over on page 10, transit operations. That can, sometimes that can fluctuate just based upon, you know, I think a positive that you have is your charges for services, so your ridership and other revenues actually increase for the year, which is a trend that you like to see. You know, most of your, most of your operating expenses for the system, unless you have changes in routes, you know, those costs will stay the same. So if you can bring in additional cash from other sources, you know, that helps bring down the requirements of the tax levy to support that operation. But this is still one of those where you look at, you know, the total operating expenses, $4.7 million, your tax levies, $840,000, so you're, you're running that operation for like 20 cents on the dollar or less, which aren't a lot of other departments that can operate like that, just being able to leverage the federal and state funding you get. Parking utility, essentially the same operating results as last year. The operation does have, you know, a slight positive cash flow, you just don't recover all of your depreciation. Similar to, a couple pages in, when you get to the golf course, that's essentially the same thing. Basically cash flow, your operation, not generating any cash to set aside for replacements and those types of things.
Anything, any of the rest, if anyone has any questions on the financial operations?
On page 12, the Ash Cash Redevelopment Project, is that Fund for the RDA?
That's the Convention Center.
The RDA would be a completely separate operation.
Why do we not call it the Convention Center Fund then?
Question.
Maybe we should.
Must have been some reason when it was initially established.
Yeah.
Look into that and get back with you.
Maybe it was the code word for it.
Nobody would know what we're talking about.
Enough that it tricked me as well, so thank you for pointing it out.
At, at the time that all that was done, that, that probably, that title probably did reflect what the purpose of it was.
Well, I think it probably encompassed the hotel too at the time, because we own the parking ramp at the hotel, and we have funds connected to that. And then the Convention Center was re, redone, so that's probably where that redevelopment, it was a redevelopment of that area.
There's a separate one?
Yeah, I know, there's a separate one that just is a parking lot, but, I don't know, I'm just trying to, that's before our time.
If we can, let's make the name more descriptive.
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking, had you asked.
Any other questions on any of the financial information? Page 14, a couple of comments. Top comment on 14, this relates to a new accounting standard that's going to be applicable to the city. You provide post-employment benefits to employees, which are things like, as long as you allow retirees to stay on your health insurance plan for any period of time, those types of things. You're required to have an actuarial study done to say, how much more does that potentially cost you with having potentially high-cost individuals on your insurance plan? And actuaries go through and calculate all this stuff and say, by your current employment base, ages of those people, what estimated people would stay on your plan when they retire, however many years down the road? What does this ultimately cost your insurance plan? If you didn't allow those people to stay on it? And actuaries figure this stuff out, and the accounting standards say, based upon what they calculate that amount to be, that's a number that you're gonna have to record in your financial statements.
Who was our actuary?
It was, yeah, Milliman.
Yeah, the biggest difference in this standard that's coming up here in '75 is, in the, in the past, the liability that, that Tom just talked about is in your footnotes. So it's all disclosed, it's all transparent. Now the standard is saying that, that the difference between the annual rate, which is your actuary would calculate an annual rate, an amortization based on the full liability, now the entire liability is going to show up in your financial statement. So it's a little bit of a change from the standard setters to get that, not just in a footnote, but in your financial statements. Is it a difference? Not really, because it's always been there, it's the same as long as your benefits stay the same. And now it's going to be presented a little bit differently, so. And in the effort, I think, from the standard setters to make it more transparent to the users of your financial statements.
And this will be a financial statement reporting amount only. It is not going to change how you budget, how much you budget for your insurance plan, any of those things. It's an actuarially calculated number that'll go in your financial statements, and that's the extent of it. But it's a new standard, so we wanted to point that out.
And for us, we pay as we go, and our liability is limited to that. It's a statistical differential, because we charge retirees the same as we charge general employees, and arguably, they should be charged more, because just statistically, they, they cost more. Now their employers, public employers, school districts probably the most responsible that, for this problem, because they offer paid health insurance, they fully pay it for five, 10 years. So it's not the differential between our, our rate and the, what the retirees should be paying, it's the difference between zero and what the retiree's paying. So the, the liabilities for school district is much greater than ours. So our, we're very much on the, on the low side. I denied the existence of this until they got real technical with me, and technically speaking, it's an actuarial thing. It's there, I don't view it as a big thing. We were talking just yesterday, how many folks do we have, maybe 30?
About 30, yes.
We've got about 30 retirees, because some people go off the plan, some retiree may go on to their spouse's plan, they, they don't take our insurance, so that liability goes away. But if they were to come back, and we've allowed them back in the past, something we want to visit in the future, probably, but as long as they're not on our plan and they go away, then they're statistically off the books, right? If I-
That is, that is correct.
Unless they haven't existed, well, unless during that calendar year, there was a claim that's still outstanding or something. But you're right.
Yeah.
How long do we allow the post-employment staying on the plan?
Till Medicare age, so it's 65, and a couple of years it'll be my age as the year shifts to 67, so you got me two years more than you thought.
It might. But just so everybody's aware, the retiree pays- Look, just so everybody's aware, the retiree pays completely the...
Oh, they do.
Yeah, the city doesn't pay any of their insurance.
The actuarial study says...
It counts against the city, but the retired employee pays the full insurance. I mean, mine, mine's over $700,000.
Is there an amount of your service that you need to require to get to that?
No, if you retire from the Wisconsin retirement system while you're in city employment, you're eligible to continue to receiving health insurance, provided you pay the full cost of the premium. Statistically, though, it should cost the retirees more, and that's what the calculation says, is if you were paying this out in the open market, for lack of a better term, it'd be a lot more expensive, and you should be paying that.
That's why you want the young people on the health insurance plan to balance it out.
Right, and that keeps it, somebody would argue that the young, healthy people are, you know, paying a little bit more, and that's a legitimate statistical argument. And we've had the discussions about how we want to continue that in the future, but until such time. And I think part of that is to remind us that there is a cost to offering that benefit, and that cost is reflected in this liability. And we know it. The other things we talked about when Councilor Allison Hasby walked in, we're far more concerned, but this is a legitimate thing that's out there.
I'll just say this, when this, when the original standard was implemented, this was one of the few government accounting standards that passed with dissenting votes on it. Usually, the board is unanimous when they issue a standard. The one dissenting vote at that time was the Finance Director of the City of Madison, someone from the state of Wisconsin, who, his argument was, you have a pool of insurance, and even though you may tend to argue that people over a certain age may have higher claims, that there are other people that have claims also. So, he argued that if you're part of a pool, you shouldn't, none of this should exist, because that pool takes into account what your cost is. It was overridden by the rest of the board, but someone from Wisconsin tried to bring some common sense to this.
But it's there, and like you said, it just...
And now, you just have to deal with it, and it's a number that's going to be in your financial statements. The second comment regarding uniform grant guidance, as I said, we go through and do a compliance audit of various grants that the city receives, the major ones, community development, block grant, transit, those types of things. There are no compliance items that we're required to report on that. But there is, under this new grant guidance that came out from the federal government, what they're looking at having all grant recipients do is to develop written documentation as to how you monitor and control your different grants. You know, when you're having, the federal transit grant comes in, what's your procedures for determining people who are charged payroll against that grant? What are your controls to make sure that the people are actually working in the transit system? That they're paid the appropriate wages, those types of things? When you have other disbursements from that grant, who determines whether those are appropriate under that grant, those types of things? When it gets to recording those transactions in your financial system, who monitors that and reconciles those things and make sure that that's correct? So, this is kind of new guidance that's come out from the federal government. I think, you know, over the years, you've always heard about how grants are distributed, and no one's really monitoring this stuff, and money's wasted, and all those things. So, what they're doing is they're taking this down to the individual entity and saying, it's your responsibility to make sure that you, that you not only, you know, and here, we believe you have the appropriate procedures in place to monitor and operate these grants. But this says you need to take that kind of one step forward and actually have it written down and documented as to how you are doing that. So, if somebody came in and said, I'd like to see your documentation as to how you're really monitoring and control this program, you wouldn't have to say, well, you can talk to accounts payable, because they do that, and payroll does this, and HR does this. And out at the department level who's monitoring it, well, they kind of review all that stuff. This should be one document that encompasses all of those things for each of the grants that you have. So, we just put that in as a suggestion that, you know, that'd be something that you work toward.
I believe last year, we did get that same recommendation, or maybe it's the next one.
We probably had both of them in there.
And so, when we had this audit last year, and those recommendations were made, was that forward-looking, new requirements, or how new are these requirements?
This has been in a place, in place for a couple of years now.
Okay, all right. And so, Mr. Olaf or Ms. Larson, have we taken any steps towards any of these recommendations?
Yes, we have taken some initial steps. We continue to develop new policy and new procedures. One key component of this will be the implementation of the Immunis system, which will enable us to have specific grant tracking and guidance. And then, we also need to go forward and work with the individual departments on beginning to development, to develop and document those internal controls, which are going to be necessary.
Will Immunis have the capacity to generate their report, like a central report summary?
Yes, yep.
The thing to remember about uniform grant guidance is, what you're really doing is compiling procedures you already have in place. Things are operated effectively.
Just a matter of laying your hands on it.
Exactly. What uniform grant guidance does is it changes a little bit of the perspective. Instead of saying, okay, by department or by area of your fiscal staff, here's your policies, that's the way it's been for 50 years. Now, they're saying, you need to have those controls documented in writing by grant. And that's a big difference, because nowhere, you know, five, 10 years ago, if I'd walked in, CDVG grant, explain the document, or explain your internal controls, you'd have to go to three, four different locations. And the grant clearing agencies want you to be very kind of focused on, how do you handle your grants and your controls over your grants? And what we're seeing in clients, and the reason why you're seeing this again, is it's a living, breathing document, it's continually changing. So, we put it in there just first few years to make sure you're talking about it, that's really the reason it's in there. But what we're seeing is a lot of clients are doing this exercise, and they're finding out that when they think about it from a grant perspective, their existing controls, there's some enhancements that could be made, or even some documentation that's like, wow, you know, I never even knew we were doing that, it's not in our original documentation, but just looking at it differently made you think about it twice. So, it's a good, positive thing.
So, how many grants would you say that we have?
Out of the various departments?
The city does receive several, several numbers of grants. One of our most significant programs would be the CDBG program.
It's primarily federal grants, so it's CDBG and transit.
Transit, and police department gets that small one.
Yeah, the bulletproof.
Burn grant.
I'm sorry, say that, what was that?
The burn grant.
Edward Byrne justice grant.
They're all fairly small.
Highway safety, yeah.
Big ones are transit.
Most of them are small, and then you get aging money passed through the county.
Right.
CDBG money.
But the reporting requirements...
Keep going up.
Keep going. But Immunis is probably going to be the, when we get that going, we'll have a little better handle on this. I mean, we're meeting the requirements, but it's like, yeah, you're doing okay, is really what you're saying, barely passing, and we had...
Part of what we're looking at, too, is we, we know you're going through system conversion, and you've got a lot going on with that, and since you're, since you're doing the minimum things you need to do, get your, get your system stuff under control, and then once that's up and running, you know, then you can take some additional steps and go into this. But we wanted to put it out there, just to keep it out there. Then the last comment we have, I think we've already discussed about the cash advances.
So, out of those 18 funds that are showing operating cash deficits, how many total funds do we have?
Seventy-five?
Oh.
Yeah, that's it.
We're about 70 funds.
About a quarter of them.
That's just the total, I think, as Mark mentioned earlier. Some of them, when you look at some of the TIFs that qualify under that, you know, there's some of your newer TIFs where you have administrative costs that you haven't recovered yet.
Pagos, the new pagos are pretty minimal. But it's those bigger ones, the aviation park, city center, southwest, both southwest, those are the big ones. And then, of course, the special assessment that we talked about.
We have to be more aggressive selling all of the land we own.
Ms. Allison Hasby, does long-range finance look at these types of scenarios?
We haven't necessarily in the past. We're usually, we've been more kind of on more project-based in the past, and in full disclosure, we haven't met in some time now. And so, I think that's something that, yeah, Councilor Peck chairs that board, and I'm on it as well, and we need to talk to Ms. Larson about, you know, what do we need to do? And I think we, as a council, also need to define, you know, what we want that to do, because I don't think that's been defined, what the role of long-range finance and kind of what the vision and the mission is, and probably hasn't been since I got on, which was 2011.
Any other questions? That's all, that's all we had.
Thank you.
The audit process itself went well. Your staff was well-prepared, as they usually.
It'd be Trina.
Well, I honestly have to say, this year was a challenging year, and I have an amazing team, and Tara is our Assistant Finance Director, and one of our primary stakeholders in this, and does an amazing job getting this quality work proud for you all. So, it was a very challenging year, but I am very proud of the accomplishments displayed in our reporting.
Well, I can honestly say, when I've stopped into your office and your office, there is never a lack of paperwork on your desk, either one of you. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we're going to go through the six-month financials, just give you an overview.
I don't see you enjoy your retirement.
Yes. Long time. Trina?
So, I think in looking at the overall revenue statements, I can tell you that in my review, that I did not find of anything that I would note as alarm or of concern at this point. The only thing I might point out is that you'll see, like, in regards to on page two, and the page numbers are at the top of your document, our police and our fire department fees appear to be down. That's because our major events, the revenue hasn't booked yet, because these financials are through June. So, although they appear to be lower, have a lot of growth to go, I am anticipating those to catch up. But overall, a very good trend for our revenues. Currently, we've collected 56.18%, which in the prior year, we were at 52.44%. So, revenues are trending as anticipated, and I would anticipate this to be on target this year. The only other revenue that I would point out to you is, you'll see the ambulance fee, that we are at the 50.72% of collections. This is an item that we did adjust in as part of our budget process. We reduced that revenue about $500,000, so showing that that analysis truly was a good target of where we're going with our ambulance revenue fees, and that should not be an issue in reaching that anticipated revenue. So, those are the primary components. Under interdepartmental revenues, engineering fees, that's a year-end entry also, so you do not see any revenue throughout the year, but those are also trending as anticipated. Does the council have any questions?
Yes, Ms. Larson, on page two, where we have 0% received, looks like from about economic development down to cable access fees. Is that common, that we would not have received anything in, at this point in the year?
Yep, that's a very good question. The TIF community development is also another year-end entry. That is the entry that comes through charging the community development staff time, so that is calculated at year-end.
Were you talking about the county aids, though?
No.
You were talking about the TIF one?
TIF and county aids and plan review fees.
The economic development county aids, that was rebooked into a different account?
They have actually started paying directly to GOEDC. That $66,300 used to pass through the city, and then we would pay to GOEDC. They had chose to go directly to GOEDC and not use the city as a pass-through.
That's the county's $1 per capita that they provide, so that goes directly, no longer gets washed through the general fund, it goes directly to GOEDC with our permission. I mean, we authorize that. So, that's why it's budgeted at zero now. I'm not sure what the $9,100 is, some just kind of remnant from the past, but we won't see that in the future, it'll be zero as long as the county likes cutting the check directly to GOEDC.
Okay. So, then we can continue on to page three and four, general fund expenditures. Again, in my review of these, of this particular statement, did not see anything of alarm at this point in the budgetary process. The only thing that I would note is the two of the departments that have trended over budget in public safety, a significant amount of their, what we call comp time, or it's the money earned through special events, the majority of that money will book in November, because that is when the, they are required to take the payout on that. So, they are trending and looking at this point that they are going to meet their budgetary amounts, however, that amount is not booked at this point, because it does sit in what we call a comp bank. Other than that, I feel that, and very confident with the rest of the departments, how they are trending.
It's almost nuts, huh?
No surprises, and that's really what you were looking for. If there's surprises, that's when you, that's when you get concerned, and the big unknown with police and police is that, that comp payout. So, the chief's following it, and I think Ms. Larson and Chief Smith are in regular contact, because they want to know what that big surprise is. Last year with chief's first year, that was a big surprise to him. He didn't, he wasn't familiar with, with how that trend goes, and it looked like things were okay, but that, that hit in November. You always have to take a look at those, those one-time hits in your department that you may not be familiar with, or that aren't with normal, two-week, or monthly frequency, and that's one of those that doesn't meet that criteria. So, now the chief is monitoring it, knows what's gonna, he knows how big that'll be in November, because he's tracking it now.
On page four, then, where we're under other fund operations, levy funds, equipment, is that another one that books towards the end of the year?
Correct, yes. That would be the $1 million that we do obligate into the capital improvement program for direct levy contribution in lieu of debt. So, if there are no other questions, we can proceed on.
Yes?
Page four, unclassified, the bank fees.
Page four, unclassified, the bank fees. Looks like we're so far well over what we had budgeted for seventeen. What is?
Yep, and I did investigate that. That's a very good question. Part of that is equated to, there was a two thousand sixteen fee that we received that we did not book back into two thousand and sixteen. So it is creating overage in two thousand and seventeen. The one thing I would also report, however, in addition to that, the council is, the Assistant Finance Director and I have met with our bank that we have a relationship with and have negotiated a lower fee structure. So we anticipate seeing additional benefit and reduction in our bank fees in this year and in the future to come.
And it looks like we're a little behind, too, on uncollectible accounts?
Uncollectible accounts is primarily driven, we book three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar uncollectible debt allowance for our ambulance. So that's something that we do book at the end of the year. So that has not been as part of this, as part of this account.
So that's not water, that's all ambulance?
Uh, it, correct. It would be ambulance and it would be personal property taxes. And then we also do get some properties sold at the prop, at the county level from the tax lien process that we also, also have to book an allowance for. Okay, so we can move along. We're moving on to our next agenda item. We've already touched on this as part of the auditor presentation, but wanted to continue on. So we're on item number three, impact of TID seven closure. What we've enclosed here is to give the council a perspective of what truly is happening with this TID seven closure in regards to cash balance. And this is a really good reflection. We've highlighted TID seven, so you can see that cash impact that that did have and how that did benefit the overall cash position of the city. And if you trail that from two thousand twelve into two thousand and seventeen, you'll see that's a swing of over a loss of fifteen million dollars in cash. So when we're talking about these negative cash balances in these funds, those have been traditionally covered by TIF number seven. And with that money now being drawn down, again, with the auditor comments, that's where we now need to start to evaluate and develop alternative plans if those, some of those funds are not going to begin to cash flow themselves. Some of it could be debt. We could potentially look in at levy into some of the TIFs with negative cash balance. So there are a few options, but this is just to illustrate truly where and how the TIF seven closure does impact us.
So with that in mind, you're going to make a recommendation to council? Or you're just going to do what you have to do? What the, what the options?
I, I think we need to continue to look at all options. Continue talking with and working with economic development and community development to see, you know, where our potential lies with the land sales and development into those industrial parks. And then looking at the potential of long-term, what is the solution? I truly feel that that's going to be a solution that is going to be one with the city manager and with the council.
For the time being, TIF seven's no longer available to, to, to.
Be a donor.
Things like, our matching funds for our Riverwalk projects have come from TIF seven over the years. Now they're going to have to compete with the eleven point four million dollars that council sets as a limit. So that'll be, they'll have to be competing with all the other projects that are out there. We took advantage of the TIF, we're real proud of that. But at the same time, that, that's no longer available. That sugar daddy of TIF seven just doesn't exist anymore. So as we've gone through CIPs, community development staff know that that's no longer has, can dip into that. Because you can see, that's where a lot of those funds, even though the, technically, this cash balance is up from sixteen to seventeen on a projection, but TIF seven goes down to zero. But you'll see a couple of the funds have gone up. And, for example, South Shore redevelopment goes from a negative to a positive because we're using, that's where the TIF seven money went. Went to go pay off some bills that are going to be coming due on South Shore. The dilemma is, when they're paid off, that'll again reduce the cash balance. It'll just be reduced out of TIF twenty. Is that fair statement?
Yes, that would be a very good.
That's the big one that, that you got to take a look at because that didn't suddenly create a bunch of TIF value. It just got the money from TIF seven. You know, Marion Road Pearl Avenue also got, you can see it was, it was small or negative for a number of years. Now, all of a sudden, it's two point seven million. It's not because it's performing better, it's just because we allocated that money to those funds for disposition. So that number will go down. That eight billion dollar number is overstated now, but it'll, it'll continue to go down.
We made GOEDC aware of the fact that we need extra help getting some of this land sold.
Oh, they're, they're, they're.
It should be a priority that they should be really focusing on.
I think that goes to kind of even our discussion yesterday and where our focus is and, you know, what we do. And I think that's, it's, it's interesting we had yesterday because sometimes TIF does play into these types of things, and sometimes maybe they don't. I mean, we would hope that somebody would want to buy the land and want to develop. But I think, again, where is our focus currently, right now? And we've been a lot on redevelopment and not necessarily on these types of things. So I think, you know, I almost wish that our strategic planning session was sooner than next July.
That's.
But that doesn't mean we can't revisit that piece of it.
Right.
And make some, some adjustments and changes.
Right.
Do we have anything like a think-tank idea of us reaching out as a city to other corporations and other companies that are successful in other cities and trying to lure them to Ash Cash?
Most of the time.
Like a headhunter type thing?
Most of the time, you're going to find that your success in economic development comes from internal. The council just approved an option to a property.
Right.
And that's going to be, that's going to be from somebody inside the city. That's where it's retention visits, making sure that you don't take who you have for granted and regularly visiting them. Statistically, eighty percent of your new business will come from within the city, not from without, from, from outside the city. So that's where the, that's where the emphasis is. But as Tom pointed out, a lot of cities, we're still going on, let's buy land, let's have a good inventory. And we purchased land about four months after I got here, thinking, oh, it's time to buy our next portion of land. We haven't sold a single piece of property in the industrial park, with the exception of the rail spur, until that option the other night. That's, that's two in nine years. It's just, when Tom said it hit the brakes, everybody hit the brakes. You haven't seen a lot of industrial development go on in a lot of parks because there's a, there's a glut of them. And the glut is reflected in these, these negative balances.
But I think if you, if you read the monthly or weekly newsletter that comes from GOEDC, they have been talking with other companies in expansion. And there's, there were several fairly solid leads, it looked like, in that. So I think they are marketing our properties and.
Mayor Cummings, I'm just curious. So I guess with this information, then, when, when you're at the RDA meetings going forward and we get offers from people that want to sell us more land, would we look at that differently, given our sales of land history? I mean, sometimes it may seem like a good idea, but I'm just curious whether or not.
Our day is more focused, or has been focused, on blight elimination. And now, because we've removed almost all of the old industrial, that was primarily the riverfront and a few blocks either way, I've been kind of direct, asking them to focus more on neighborhood blight, elimination, and rehab.
And are they amenable to that as a group?
Can I make one comment? Then the RDA, like, that's not really affecting our cash positions here in the TIFs because those are then funded by the block grant, usually.
The neighborhood ones?
Yeah.
That, that run through the RDA.
So they're helping in a different way.
One last question, then we'll move on. But the negative eleven thousand one thirty-two for Morgan District, what is that?
Our cost that we did for formation of the district that will be eventually reimbursed for. And that's why you see, they're all a little, they're all in that neighborhood, the Beach Building, North Beach, Morgan, Washington. They're all in that neighborhood about what it costs us to form the district and when the tax regimen starts coming off. And those will come fairly soon because those are, those are pagos. And as we reported last night, you know, it's not, there's a small portion that comes to us, and that'll, that'll knock that.
So that four hundred, thousand two hundred is, is for all of these, what we have in administrative costs?
Which one?
The very bottom one where it talks about TIF administration fee, twenty seventeen budget.
Trina, you guys have to help me with that one.
So that would be the anticipated salary cost that will be charged against the TIF districts for the involvement of the city. So the city does charge direct staff time to the TIFs, and that would be the estimate of what we will charge into these TIF districts at year-end.
And at year-end, that will be a lot lesser number because we'll be able to pull some money out of those.
It'll eventually get, it'll eventually get charged to all these different funds, and then that'll end up being a zero. It's going to get allocated up throughout all the different funds. And do you do it equally, or do you base on who has cash?
They, no, they track their time. And then they tell us at year-end how much time they spent on each TIF. And then we do an allocation to the TIF based on their, each person's time at year-end.
Okay.
It's our total, I guess, salary that would fall under those. So that would be community development, that would be planning services. Would inspections be in there, too? Economic development?
Probably not.
It's usually. No, it's usually just economic development staff and community development staff that are tracking their time.
Now, if we were to dissolve one of these TIFs, what happens to that financial picture, then, if there are fees that are, or an outstanding balance?
If there's negative cash?
Uh-huh.
We have to fund that negative cash with a transfer from something, whether it be the general fund. You really can't issue debt if you're going to close it. So you could levy for it.
So our, so we're not going, we will be closing Washington Court seventeen? Is that, does that get a, that's got a positive, doesn't it? TIF eleven, which is Washington Court?
Oh, Court in Wago.
That's a, that's got a seventeen projected closing date. Are we closing that one? I thought TIF seven's the only one we're closing this year.
Yeah, no, I do not believe we are closing Court in Wago at this, in seventeen.
I know you got a note that it's not ready to close due to cash position. So then what do we do?
I don't know, but I can't help you with that.
What do we do, then, to try to regenerate? I mean, there's no projects planned in there. It's pretty much done what it was supposed to do, correct? I'm not sure, because that was done one before I was on council, so I don't really know what was created in nineteen ninety-five. I'm not sure what it was created for. Was that to remodel the old post office and a couple of things in that area?
That one hasn't come on my radar screen for a number of years. It just says that no projects currently outstanding, ready to close due to cash position. And it shows that we're getting about sixty-seven, sixty-eight hundred dollars this year.
Right.
So, I mean.
I mean, we got a few years mandatory closing isn't until twenty twenty-two. But is there, what is in there that we could generate some additional cash flow? Or isn't there anything?
You mentioned that one, but that's not in a negative cash position.
No, I know, I'm just, but we're not going to close it because it still says that it's not ready to close due to cash position, so.
Yeah, it, what it can do is it can stay open and continue to generate that increment. So even if it's generating twenty-seven thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars until closure, what that's going to do is grow that cash balance until the closure dates. And then that available cash will be dispersed amongst all taxing jurisdictions. So if a project were to come up in that TIF district that would meet the project plan, there will be a minimal amount of cash that could be utilized or it could be kept open and closed at the closing date. And then those, those cash proceeds dispersed among the taxing jurisdictions.
Okay.
So all of those that have projected closing dates between now and, say, twenty twenty-five, they, they have projected closing dates, but not necessarily the statutory closing year. So that's what we originally thought, but they get extended out. Is that what you're saying? If they're not in a cash position to close?
What Tara's saying is that these projected closing dates are generally based on the TIF plan when they bring it forward, and the number of years that they think that they need to keep the district open in the initial TIF.
Right.
And that's approved by the council.
And so then, when it doesn't happen in the projection, and there's, you know, several years out, I guess, what makes the? So let's say, for example, the Wago Court, one that Mr. Herman was talking about, was supposed to be twenty seventeen, but it's looking like twenty twenty-two. It could still be closed any time between this year and twenty twenty-two if conditions improved?
Well, technically, it stays open as long as it has debt obligations. So the minute debt obligations end, then, then you should look at closing them.
I know no one's here from economic development may can answer. So on these older TIFs that are out there, that have negatives, there's some future projects, and a couple of them, economic development monitors them and then kind of keeps an eye on them. And do we, do they try to put a plan of action together to boost up that TIF? Or is it just because it's been out there for so long, we're just kind of letting them ride and wait for something to happen?
Yeah, you know, most of them, if you take a look at the net anticipated balance at closure, there's, based on its current cash position and its future tax regimen and/or expenses, there's positive cash balances anticipated for all of them until you get down to Southwest Industrial Park number four, which is, excuse me, which is twenty thirty. So those ones will, will do okay. A good example is, take one that says, you know, City Center Rehab. It's in a negative cash position now, but we're anticipating, and it's got four point two million dollar in debt outstanding, but we're going to get that much in tax regimen, and it's going to end with one forty-five, assuming everything goes well. So in that case, as Tom had said earlier, some of these TIFs, you, you're in, you're underwater for virtually the whole life of the TIF. Does it emerge out of, out of that after? The one you want to be concerned about is TIF twenty-three because it's negative and it's projected. And again, how will that, how will that benefit? We got, if we sell some land, suddenly you go from zero land value to something substantial. But until that happens, you're waiting with a great deal of anxiety because that one is negative.
Right, so that's kind of one where you probably wouldn't want to promote TIF money that's available because it's already a TIF underwater.
It's.
Even though we, we said TIF money available for economic development, or, you know, we talked about that last night. That'd be one where you wouldn't want to promote TIF development because it's already under.
No, we'd want to promote TIF development there because, because.
So we would have to create another TIF or put them in this TIF?
No, those TIFs, we've put all the money in the ground already.
Okay.
The good, that's the good news. The bad news is, we have debt that we have to pay for it. So to the degree we get a developer that says, you know, Jake asked if we go to, you know, we go to, you know, go to someone and solicit them, and they say, I'm going to build a twenty million dollar building. Well, there's twenty million in value that now starts to put tax regimen in there. That's what we want, so that we can start generating some tax regimen. It's not generating enough tax regimen right now. And that's with Southwest Industrial Park four, anticipated future increment right now is zero because we can't count on something that doesn't exist. So we have to, to the degree we find somebody that wants to buy some land, So we have to, to the degree we find somebody that wants to buy some land, number one, that will help the industrial park fund. And then number two, if it's twenty million dollars in development, suddenly you got twenty million dollars, the increment off of that will help cut into that, that hole that we're in now. Those are the ones, the ones anticipated at closure, the negative ones there, those are the ones that you want to have number one attention to. Now fortunately, they're farther out, you know, Council Palmieri asked, you know, what about the ones up to twenty twenty-five?
Uh huh.
Fortunately, as, if things go as they're currently going, by the time of their closure we'll be okay. But Southwest Industrial Park number four and Aviation Business Park, something's got to get going. And if something does, then it's good, but until then, I mean Aviation Business Park, we've, council talked about that just recently, that one, something's got to move because we're doing absolutely.
So, so in, in that scenario, then Lamaco redevelopment actually helps the Marion Pearl TIF? Is that in that district?
No, Lamaco was completely, they didn't want to be part of it.
That's right.
It was a big donut hole there.
Yeah.
So now TIF thirty-three is its own little entity. And the pay goes, you're going to see a little bit of in and out, but eventually that, that nineteen thousand two, four twenty-two for Beach, that'll slowly get bled down. That, I mean, that's because it's a pay go, as long as they're producing some tax increment, we'll get that knocked down eventually. We're not getting a tax increment right now, but soon, once it kicks in, it'll be okay.
And that's kind of saying there the granary redevelopment.
The pay goes, I'm not worried about at all. It's all the other ones that are above it, the ones that were not pay goes, those ones that were before, those ones that were before those pay goes. Aviation and TIF in Industrial Park four, those are my two concerns. Even though like Marion Jackson's currently in the negative, TIF seven took care of it and now it's generating tax increment, you know, we'll, we'll get there. It's gotten taken care of. It's not like it's, you know, from a financial standpoint, you can't say it was a smashing success, but we've got enough TIF seven money in there that it'll coast its way out.
So my question relates then to the, those number, TIF number twenty-seven through thirty-three are most recent where there's no debt outstanding, but yet we have negative cash balances even though they're small. So how is it that we would not have any debt outstanding, but we're in negative cash balance?
Now you said number twenty-seven, did you mean one of the other ones after that?
No, twenty-seven and a total debt outstanding as of the end of this year is zero, North Industrial Park number two.
That is, that's the.
Bemis, right?
Bemis. And so we didn't, we didn't incur any debt with that.
Oh, I'm sorry, that one just has no debt. I'm sorry, the ones below that, you're right.
Okay.
Beach through.
Those are all just those, those little bit of charges that were associated with forming them, whether it's legal costs, elders, things like that. So we go into a little hole.
So that is debt though, right? Or did we?
No, that's negative cash. We didn't go into debt for those, we just went into negative cash.
It was in the accounts receivable.
Yeah.
Counting terms.
Is it, I don't know how you guys.
It's not a formal accounts receivable, but it is an advance of cash.
Okay.
And I think that that's one thing that you guys are seeing truly is the philosophical approach of switching to the pay go TIFs have mitigated that debt risk and that debt exposure where you need that available increment to make those debt service payments. And until you have a sufficient stream of cash flow, then, then it, it has to be met with an alternative cash source, which is what we're kind of seeing in the middle of the page, whereas where you get towards the bottom of the page and philosophically, we've went with more of the pay goals, which have given us much less risk, much less exposure and much less cash outlay.
Lower, lower risk, lower reward, but it's, but we.
Well, falls back on the developer, not on us.
If they don't perform, it'll take longer for that, for example, the Beach Building nineteen four twenty-two. If it didn't perform, they're not going to get a lot of money, but our payback is going to be very slow. Let's say it generates half of what it anticipated in the plan, just for the sake of discussion. Well, then our four nineteen four twenty-two is going to get paid back to us very, very slowly. Potentially at the end of the TIF, if it was not performing, we might have to eat that balance, but it's not like we're eating a potential balance like in Southwest Industrial Park four, one point four million dollars. If we don't perform, we could have even more. We've, we really are taking a huge risk with good upsides if it performs. I mean, for example, Commerce for Imprint, you know, taking it out, it's four point seven million anticipated at the end. There's a lot of assumptions there. We took, we took a lot of risk and we will be rewarded for those. But we also have high risk, high rewards with the ones that aren't performing as well and that's the real danger that we have. That first statement?
Yes.
So far, Trina has not kicked me at all during meetings, so I must be doing something.
Can we move on?
Sure.
Move on.
Okay, so we're ready to move on to item four, page seven. This is something that you see annually. It's our historical numbers lowest to highest and we're looking at our comparable communities. So we have six other communities. This year I've tried to make it a little bit easier for you and I have sorted it from lowest to highest. So when we're looking at the municipal property tax levies, it's looking at the years two thousand sixteen seventeen for the sort. You'll see that we are in number, the number two position with our comparable communities currently with our general fund tax levy. In addition, our municipal property tax levy per capita, we're also holding that second position with five hundred and forty-four dollars. In regards to our municipal tax rates, you'll see that we are in the fourth position for where we are falling, kind of mid-range, Janesville being at eight oh seven and West Alice being at ten eighty. So coming a little bit in the middle of that for the people watching this at home and also showing our equalized value in that second position for some of the, so for lower equalized values compared to our comparable, comparable communities.
And you know, we haven't really talked about it a lot, Trina, but the equalized value, we did get that report that it's going up about, how much dollar wise? It's four percent?
It's four percent. This was our, our highest growth since I have been here and it's one of our highest growths that we have seen in a number of years.
In the whole decade.
Uh huh.
I don't have an answer for you, I wish I did because it's good news, but we can't, I don't know if we necessarily nailed it down where it necessarily came from, but it, it took us by surprise.
What did the other cities look like? Did they achieve that much growth too or were we way ahead of them percentage wise?
We haven't gotten there yet. We haven't gotten there. Well, we were dragging behind in others, so I mean, it could be one of those things where it's caught up, I don't know. It's, we don't, is it necessarily manufacturing? Because manufacturing was, was going down a great deal and I, I was concerned about that. I don't know, is it manufacturing that bumped up?
A, a portion of it was attributable to manufacturing. I would also attribute some of our TIF closures also assisting in this because that would be coming on to the equalized value if you're looking at TIF, TIF value out. So that could be a contributing factor as well.
So eight and nine?
Eight and nine.
Because this is TIF out. TIF out means not including TIF value. Those get bumped back in when TIF seven closed, now that TIF seven's closing, that in the next couple of years.
We'll see another bump.
We'll see another bump and that'll, that'll be explainable, but I guess we didn't give as much credence to the smaller TIFs, but you think maybe the smaller TIFs make sense.
Weren't we confused why it wasn't going up because there's been so much building going on too? Look at all this stuff in the frontage roads.
But that goes back to the whole dark store thing.
Yes.
And the state was reducing manufacturing assessments, which while we can protest, and I know people have brought that up, we can protest, but the reality is, is the state, it's almost a de facto tax cut, in my opinion, that the state has slowly been increasing those and maybe it, there's not so much left they can cut, so when people are adding, it does benefit us a little bit.
So then we would continue on to page eight. One of our topics from our first workshop where we did discuss shared revenue, you will see in our comparable communities, we do rank number five out of six for the amount that we are receiving. But if you recall back to workshop number one, we are far from recovering the amount of cuts that we've received from the state overall over the past fifteen years. So general obligation debt, you'll see that we are taking the sixth position on this with the highest amount of general obligation debt. This is something though, that with our current debt management plan, we're seeing large amounts of success. And I would anticipate that as we continue on that plan, that hopefully we will move away from the person with the highest amount of debt. Debt per, debt per capita, also we are holding the sixth position. And the percent of our debt limit, you'll see that these statistics are from two thousand fifteen. That's how the study takes these stats from. So we have greatly reduced that seventy-seven point seven percent, which we will report again to you in our next council workshop in September, but we are no longer at that seventy-seven point seven percent. The goal of the council is that seventy percent or, or under and we are nearing in and we'll be reaching that in the very near future. Does anybody have any questions in regards to those historical numbers? The one thing I'm not going to go over with you, but in the back of your book, there are the full report, it starts on page fourteen. I'd encourage everyone to look over that. It does some real good comparable, some other good comparabilities, looking at our contributions for fire and ambulance compared to other communities, looking at our contributions to police. Again, a topic from our workshop number one, this is an area where the Oshkosh does have a focused effort in investing in those areas. So we won't be going over that report tonight, but if you do have any questions when you're reviewing that, please let me know. So that would bring us into our next segment of our workshop, our five-year model. The one item that we do have under here, which there's not a worksheet or work paper for that, is the Department of Revenue Audit Expenditure Restraint Outcome. As we discussed in workshop number one, there has not been any changes and Department of Revenue has kept with their reinterpretation of state statutes. Expenditure restraint will definitely be a continued challenge for the city in continuing to try to meet that goal from the state, but obtaining that goal is critical when you're speaking about one point two million dollars of revenue into general fund revenues. That is something that it is critical that we maintain compliance and achieve that. So you'll hear more about that in the budget workshops, four and five, when we look at where we're at and how we are meeting that compliance. So that would move us along into the actual work papers that we have for you. We'll start with page nine. What we start with is a work paper that has about ten years of history and we target it in five years and look at the amount of actual revenue received by these significant and major categories. And based on those trends, and we do use some weighted averages, we then develop some assumptions that we want to run through the model. This year I tried to illustrate better for the public and for the council to better understand this model. So the items that are pink are items that I am holding constant for what we budgeted in two thousand and seventeen and just carrying that budgetary amount across. The other items that have that single star, they're using that weighted average. So they're looking at the five-year average and then applying a weighting principle and it's dividing by two, three, four and five. So that's just the, the methodology going, that goes into this calculation. So if you turn to page ten, what this is showing is by major category, what do our revenues look like for the next five years for the city of Oshkosh? The first year would include our two thousand seventeen bud, budget, which was already passed, and then the four years of projections using the assumptions that have been calculated on the front page. What I would call your attention to is really at the bottom, is our total general fund revenue. So in our two thousand seventeen budget, we're at forty-three million nine hundred seventy-seven thousand and nine hundred dollars. What we're anticipating for growth with the assumptions that have been applied from the previous page is a growth of forty-six million nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand three hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-five cents. So not much growth there to maintain the growth of expenditures. So what I would do is direct your attention into the next page of page eleven, which then starts our assumptions for our five-year expenses model. And what you'll see on this is again, a very similar format. The items that are pink have been held constant and there is assumption that there won't be an increase. The items in purple, I've just applied the weighted average for the five years for the current budget year across the model and then used for the single star items, use that weighted average methodology. And so if you turn to page twelve, by each major, major category, you'll see this model has projected out based on these assumptions, what we would project our expenses to be. The one disclaimer I will give you, this is not looking at like two point five percent wages, eight percent in health insurance, it's really looking at from a more of a modular perspective. But what I would draw your attention to is the total general fund for total city expenditures of, we're at the seventy-one million eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand two hundred. That would be our total general fund expenditures. And then if you follow across to twenty twenty-one, we project seventy-six million seven hundred and seventy-six, seventy-six million seven hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred and ninety-two thousand. So you're seeing that growth of almost five million dollars per the model projections, which if you're recalling the revenue, we did not have that much growth in the revenues. Not telling you anything that I haven't told you in prior years, but if you continue to page three, you see the illustration of really where this model puts us. The one thing that I will tell you is if you look at the previous years, the gap in this model was wider, but still, when you're looking at almost a two million dollar deficit in the year twenty twenty-one, and what that would be is that would be total general fund revenues versus total general fund expenditures. You have that significant deficit and where are we going to either raise revenue or reduce services? It's a challenge that will be something that we talk a lot about in this budget cycle. It's something that you're very familiar with and it hasn't gotten any brighter. We just have to be thinking more creatively and looking outside the box because our, our picture is showing that it's going to be some very challenging years here in Oshkosh to come.
This is a higher level analysis, this isn't getting into the micro issues. The last meeting we were at, we talked about making an assumption of two and a half percent on the wages. on the wages, 8% on health insurance. That doesn't mean we've conceded those, but that's, we feel we need to put those in. This is more of a higher level, just saying, look, if we don't, excuse me, correct those issues, we are staring down these types of deficits. Every year, we point this out and in about seven weeks, we'll be delivering the 2018 proposed budget to you and it will be balanced. And it will be balanced with a combination of things that will help balance it out. We know that the tax increase needs to be kept to an absolute minimum. And you can see that the trend is because of shared revenue getting cut over the years. I heard something in Milwaukee today. Milwaukee's shared revenue has not been increased since 1995. We're probably in that same category. There was a big cut in 2010, but even before 2010, shared revenue was frozen or cut in prior years. And as those revenues get cut or the increase is minimal, the one I know the mayor is always interested in is payment for municipal services. You know, the increase has been minuscule or a reduction. That's pretty consistent over the years. And the only alternative we have is to go at property taxes. That's not a good alternative. You can see, even though we're a little on the higher side, you know, we're probably even the higher tier than the lower tier, all of our cities are doing the same thing. I was surprised when I saw that some of the communities were already over $10 per thousand. That used to be the dividing line and we've, you know, we've come to that.
If some of our TIFs would improve, would that be considered raised revenue? But it would also probably increase services too. Because now, you know, you may have more service for calls, service on utilities that are now providing basically hardly anything because it's vacant land. So what, is there a trade-off of really going real hard after some of this stuff?
My belief is that the TIF, the problem TIFs at the industrial parks, they won't add a great deal of service calls because if we do it right, they build it with fire pressures and things like that, then we're okay. It'll add a couple inspections a year, but those places, the modern ones are just generally so much easier to do.
So another way of looking at it is maybe we need to not focus so much maybe on, let's just say economic development in a sense, but to, one, rehabbing our neighborhoods to increase home values and maybe start to really look at developing some subdivisions. And we have done some of that. We've added some land and stuff where they're building new homes and adding revenue. But we haven't really had a push for redevelopment of subdivisions where we could build single-family homes for citizens to live in. We have a lot of apartments and we're building a lot of apartments, but that doesn't generate a ton of revenue for the city.
I'll defer to the only planner in the room, Councilor Paul Mary. Generally, industrial property do tend to demand fewer services than residential. So I still think we need to do residential, not for necessarily the reasons you stated, but I think we need to get, develop residential. So the people who are going to work in town have a place to live and that offers value. If we're going to be attracting those folks, we might as well have them live in town to start with.
Well, this doesn't help us much for 2018 or maybe 2019, but Trina and I were at a conference in Madison with the league. The subject matter was new funding sources for communities. I want to follow up in Sheboygan a couple of weeks ago. And the league has outlined about 20 different areas that to approach to really change the tax structure in the state. We can't rely on property taxes anymore. How far that's going to go in Madison, but I think every city that I've talked to, we're in the same, we're in the same bind because of funding being cut, mandates being not funded, mandates, it's serious throughout the state.
We're a service industry. It's primarily personnel. That's a big issue. We're looking very hard at health insurance, even though we're not, HR is taking the lead on it, but Finance Director and I have been intimately involved in the, what's going on with health insurance. It's not as simple as just raising the premiums. There was a little discussion amongst council members the other day. That's not what it's about, but it's looking to get the best deals we can. We do have to work more to direct more traffic to our clinic and designing our plan to get people to our clinic. It's those micro things that we're going to do to balance 2018 and we got to focus on those longer-term things for 19 and 20 and 21. The current tax system is not sustainable. For us to rely on property taxes, that worked great when Wisconsin was founded in 1848. That is not, it's not sustainable long-term. And you can see it in our, our property taxes are going up and our state aid's going down. Something's got to give.
If you recall, Mayor Bariff, Milwaukee had the chart showing this much is being shipped off to Madison and this much is coming back from Madison. And that, that's the problem.
I had a question. Why is Appleton doing so much better than us in every category? I mean, it's a comparable sized city. Is it economic development? Is it industry, manufacturing?
There's a higher median wage.
Yeah, it's incredibly a lot higher in Appleton. Why is that?
I mean, there's a long answer to that, but I mean, it has to do with employers there who have, who offer wages that are higher than on average here.
I'm sorry to interrupt this. This is something I'm very passionate about. We have to, when we are looking at development, look at those job-producing attraction that's not just service sector type employment because it's a vicious cycle where we grow more, you know, restaurant server jobs or, you know, bar service or hotel or whatever, we are perpetuating the cycle.
No, you mean...
In terms of people having living wage.
A council member, Crowe, is commenting. Are you talking about the city of Appleton or are you talking about the Appleton metro area?
Everything on their metrics is better than ours. I mean, is it because of manufacturing jobs, which are a lot better than service?
Well, they're about 20,000 population more.
Historically, the paper mills, which is a lot of, need to manage, Appleton, were much higher paying jobs than the lumber mills. And I think that's, that's continued.
They've survived in...
Well, they've transitioned over to more kind of white collar versus blue collar too in their, you know, healthcare type jobs and things.
Insurance.
Financial services, that kind of thing.
Right.
We have not...
So we need to attract those kinds of businesses to actually...
And that wealth has all those cumulative effects. So I mean, that's, you've just opened a very deep discussion, Councilmember.
Well, you look at the size, you talk healthcare, you look at the size of St. East to Mercy, the size of Appleton Medical to Aurora. You know, they're, they're just bigger entities, bigger, you know, institutions. And a lot of it is...
Isn't there still like, like about an $8,000 to $10,000 difference in the median income for their metro area as opposed to the Oshkosh Nida metro area?
What role does the prison population and the university population find in some of these numbers? Are they counted in? In the prison, that's kind of a...
Counted in population and it's counted in the per capita numbers, but it doesn't create the wealth of a community. You could, depending on which side of the argument you want to take, you could argue that our community is more about 52,000 than it is 66,000 when you add...
That numbers would take us a lot more.
Right. And that, that's part of it. And the student wealth, I mean, there is no student, that's an oxymoron. It's parent wealth and I can tell you that's how the money's going. But all kidding aside, our wealth numbers, when you include the students, that those 10,000 students, you can argue about what the real number is, but the number is there. Those students have virtually no income, so income per capita is...
But the university has a lot of good paying jobs too.
Right, the university itself. That helps, that helps ramp it up to the degree they live here. It's about, it's about attracting people to our community and keeping them there.
If we don't have anything other than, you know, $10 an hour jobs to offer them after they graduate, you know, then...
And we can't, you know, we can't dictate to an employer what to pay. You know, that's his decision.
No, but we can, like we talked about yesterday, encourage the incentives to provide...
Sure. But I still think we need more land development for single-family, future single-family housing developments too. We don't have a lot of that. People come into Oshkosh, houses don't stay for sale very long because the stock is, isn't much. So if a good quality house comes on the market, it's gone. And we have some future growth on the south side, southwest side, but, you know, but we have land use agreements with the different townships and that we're moving forward with those land use agreements. And we had some, the last council meeting, we had, you know, some resolutions out there and things, so it's good.
The problem is with home values, the average value of a home in Oshkosh is about 120,000. It easily doubles, Town of Algoma, easily doubles if not more.
And frequently that is this kind of sucking sound is the services are provided, but the, that, yeah, property tax is not coming in.
Right.
Part of, I mean, we're, before we go, we have 17 minutes. We need, we're looking for some direction, but to that point, you know, the investment in the central city is very important. One of the things that Seal Levine said early on was the indicator of a vibrant community is when your downtown core values start to go up. And, you know, that's something that hasn't happened yet. Some of these things we're doing, the intent is to do that. But one of the things we talk about at Go EDC is it's certainly great to attract businesses to town, but we also have to make sure the workers want to live here and offering them housing alternatives. And Go EDC is talking about, how do we get?
Right.
I almost cut you off and I apologize.
Oh, that's right.
But making single-family housing available. Now, part of it is making them aware of, of great housing opportunities in some of the older areas that some of our young, at least young people will choose to invest in those areas and we need more people like that. I'm not just, I'm not just sucking up there, Councilmember.
And I noticed that we had like a, I don't know, 1.8 million or whatever for Healthy Neighborhoods initiative. And it'll be interesting to see as we go further in the process, you know, what are we getting for those kinds of investments in the central city? And I know we've got that Imagine Oshkosh preview coming on the sixth, I believe it is.
For tomorrow, a week from, yeah, a week from tomorrow. Thank you.
Moving on.
I think the one thing in regards to Mayor Cummings' comments, I did hear this weekend, the mayor of Milwaukee is proposing a local sales tax of 0.5%. If you recall back in our budget workshop number one, we did talk about that possible resort fee tax being applicable to the city of Oshkosh. But I would encourage the public and the members of the council to continue to track that if that's something that can gain on the state level some support, it's...
That's on the league agendas. Most of the cities need it.
What's a 1% increase due to our impact?
1% increase?
Like if we went 0.5%?
Well, if you do like the county does, a 0.5%, it would increase their revenues rather significantly.
A lot for Green Bay.
We get no sales tax revenue right now. The, you know, the issue that was being talked about on, if you watch Upfront with Mike Gouche, that's where it was on, it was on Sunday's show. And that's more about Milwaukee has some serious problems and needs to get out of a hole and suggesting a 0.5% or 1% sales tax versus what the mayor and I were at the league talking about saying, we need to redo the system. Property tax system is not sustainable. We need to take a look at, because all it does with all these tax exemptions, it's just falling on the single family property owner. The idea is, do we take a look at a new tax system that redistributes to sales tax? Now, the good side is, it, you know, creates a reliable source of income. We have a great sales tax base here in Oshkosh. The downside is, we have to be ready. I came from a state, it's been 25 years, but I still have memories when the economy goes down, and it will. I mean, it will, you will, you will see an immediate drop in revenue. It's not an allocation from the state. It's sales tax, 1% of sales tax goes to cities in California. If we distribute it like we're talking about, then suddenly it goes down. Some of the discussion is also to share it, to do revenue sharing and that. You talk to our friends to the north in Appleton, even though all the metrics look really good, if you shift to a sales tax system, they don't like it because their sales tax base is in the Town of Grant Shute. I know a little bit about that. I mean, it's...
In Town of Algoma here?
Not as much though. Think about the sales tax base that they have.
Limited.
It's very limited.
Oh, okay.
They get the residential base, they're performing much better.
So like outlet malls are still within our...
The outlet mall, I mean, what it does is, go down to Illinois and you see this, cities will steal retail from one another. I mean, they'll, they'll offer, you know, we'll give you half of your sales tax back if you, if you literally hop across the road and put your car lot on our side. And they, I mean, it gets a little ugly because you're really, it's really a zero-sum gain when you think about it. Because yeah, all you, you, City A may benefit by stealing a car dealership from City B, but in reality, it's the same sales tax. It's just getting, it's going more to the business. Isn't really helping economic development. Those are the...
But the sales tax is more the discussion at the state level. But Trina brought up, again, was the reminder about what we may or may not be able to do with this resort tax fee, right? A resort...
Right. And that's already out there because I know the city of Ryland are...
That's more applicable in the short term for us as a community.
Can we get, can we get some information on what, what it is and then maybe even what businesses in our city would be...
Larson brought it up. I'll let her...
Yeah, I mean, I just, I mean, I'm sure those businesses don't, would not like that, but at the same time, we gotta look. It's a legitimate tool that's out there, just like the VIC registration fee was a tool that we hear a lot about.
That was used on you like a tire iron.
Yes, it was. So, you know, and I understand that, you know, but at the same time, we have to look at, as Trina brought up, our revenues have to go up or we're going to have to cut services. And we're a service entity business. That's what the city does. So what services can we live with cutting?
One of our strengths is we do have a good retail base. We really do. We don't statistically track it because we don't benefit directly. I mean, we benefit indirectly. The retail is great. It provides great property tax base, but we don't take, but the economy isn't property tax-based anymore. The economy is really more, it's more service-based. And the other discussion is, do you, do you get into start taxing for services? Because even sales, and sales are tough to chase with online.
There's an effort to start taxing online as well.
So there's, there's a lot of things we need to do, but meanwhile, we have a budget to balance and on October...
Back to you.
I believe it's like October 10th or 11th, you'll receive your booklets.
We'll deliver a balanced budget to you, whether you like the balancing part of it. Will be entirely up to you, but we'll give you a balanced budget. But is there any specific direction? I know that kind of putting you on the spot, but our direction staff was no increase in the base except for the percentages that we outlined, the two and a half for wages and 8% on health insurance. Those are the assumptions that we're allowing them to include in their budget. But other than that, we're pretty much saying you got to hold the line.
My directive would be, said it before, that fees and more primarily non-resident fees. When I was doing real estate, you heard the comment, I want a house in Town of Algoma because I don't want those city taxes. Well, they're not paying city taxes, but they're using a lot of city services at a bargain. When the city manager of Fond du Lac told me he launches his boat in Oshkosh because it's cheaper to do it than in Fond du Lac, that tells you something, that we're giving stuff away. So I think we're not talking mega dollars, but I think we've got to start moving in that Any disagreement? Any disagreement?
No, I mean, we've had that discussion in the Parks Board, and that came under last year. And, you know, we've, I think, the special event fee thing is being looked at and where we're at with that, and I think that work group will be getting a workshop on that here soon. But from the citizen's standpoint, what I hear from citizens is fees is just another unmandated tax. And I don't think we can fee our way out of these types of economic situations because it doesn't generate enough tax.
We're messing around the edges. We're not...
Right, no.
I want to go back to the, you know, the discussion that we had last year about priority-based budgeting. I understand that you've asked departments to stay, you know, at a 0% increase, but, you know, I would ask, aside from, you know, cutting positions of each department, is there a program or, you know, what else? If they had to remove something, what would it be? And what would the potential impact be?
I believe that...
Programming or other...
At the last, at the end of the last workshop, that was, I'm glad you brought it up, because that was raised. So we've asked that of department heads. Now, the reality is, is we're probably going to see a lot of the things that were previously looked at, and some are going to be non-pallatable to you. And we'll provide those to you in terms of what options are there to do that. They will be program reductions or program eliminations. And I guarantee that the folks who have a vested interest in that will show up, some in uniform, just, but, and there's also other ones as well. Even though we don't formally do priority-based budgeting...
I know, we're kind of in a hybrid.
Yeah, we, in effect, do it with every discussion we have with departments in terms of, where are you going to go? What are your priorities? The fact that we have, I think we've got a pretty sophisticated strategic plan compared to most municipalities, that we've got our, we've got our eyes on our priorities through that. The real question is, is one of the values of priority-based budgeting is, it's not so much as, you know, the top-end priorities, because those are pretty obvious. You've dictated those to us through the strategic plan. It's, what do you do with the lower priority ones? That don't meet the top of the list, how important are they? And you get the citizen survey, you know, you take a look at those things in terms of, you know, high importance and low quality, you don't want to cut those. In fact, if anything, you want to put more into those because you have that. And the logic that I presented to the council was, Public Works has the largest gap between importance and quality. Snow removal, streets, things like that. And my belief was that you want to put, if you're going to put more funds, you put it there. Well, the problem is, we don't have more funds to put in, so we kind of just say, well, we don't want to cut any more from that. But the answer is, you go to the ones that are either low importance and say, how much do we need of those things? Typically, those are quality of life. It's library, museum, parks. And always the tough discussion versus public safety. And, you know, public safety, there are very few things that we have, but there are things we could talk about. But, you know, I jokingly said, you'll have a bunch of people in uniform, but the reality is, is that the council, because of the level of quality and the level of importance, council didn't want to sacrifice that. And that's totally understandable. You didn't want to, you didn't want to create a gap. You didn't, there's no, there's very little gap between quality and importance with public safety. But you want to create one, and there's your dilemma.
I think we also have to look at the arrangement we have with Winnebago County for ambulance service. I mean, we're chasing all over the, well, under the Nina Minashe, we're servicing a lot of this county. And are we getting paid what we're worth?
Those are contracts with the, well, aren't they township contracts here?
Not the county itself.
With the municipalities, is there...
Again, I think we've got to look at that stuff, and are we shortchanging ourself by this service? You know, I had the ambulance come out to Amro a couple of weekends ago because my grandson got hurt. That was a long run from Zoom Station 17. I'm not sure which one. But they provide, we provide that service to the bulk of the county, and what's the contract with the county?
We just renewed it last year, I think.
I think we should look at that and say, is that a place to get more money for the service we provide? I mean...
The relative value. I would say, we don't want to eliminate it, would hurt us, but is it appropriate? I think there's...
Is the funding, is the funding, what we're charging, if that's a correct term, is that appropriate for the service we provide? I mean, those guys are...
Legit issue.
...in two seconds on a Saturday.
We're saving those cities a lot more money, you know, so we're giving it to them, but we are...
It goes back to the, I want to live in town of Algoma because I have to pay less taxes, but yet, are they getting an ambulance service at a bargain? I guess this is...
It's the availability factor, because there's a charge, and, you know, we collect in those charges to the degree they're insured and things like that, but the reality is, that's...
I've had to use the fire department, the paramedics twice in the last month. One for my mother, who's 100, one for my grandson, who's three. Both of them think the paramedics are the greatest people in the world, and they are. They are so good with people regardless of age. I just watched them, and, I mean, I stood back and watched, and they're just top-notch, I think.
If I could just add one thing that we've hit on once before, and that is, okay, so we just recently looked at amending our pilot, our payment in lieu of taxes with the Housing Authority, and it's my understanding we were in the works with another nonprofit to institute a pilot agreement, one of the nursing home communities, I believe.
I think Evergreen.
Okay, and so my question is, you know, if you start thinking a little more creatively, you know, I realize that not every community does this, but, you know, can it hurt for us to start asking some of our larger nonprofits to voluntarily contribute based on the fact that they are not, they're receiving services, but they're not contributing taxes? I understand they provide different value to the community, but can it hurt for us to ask?
That also was on the league agenda, and the best comment was, and a lot of these churches aren't legitimate. They're store, I mean, they've got a scam going, but they get, I'm not saying that about churches here, but that was a comment made by somebody at this conference in Sheboygan. But the same thing is, if a church, for example, burns, it's going to take a lot more fire trucks than if my house burns.
Well, I guess to Lori's comment is, what is the standard operating procedure? I mean, there's state statute that regulates that, correct?
And it's pretty much voluntary.
Okay, so would it make sense to look at what other, maybe other communities are doing? Are they doing more of those pilot-type things? Are they, are they sending letters out asking, in a sense? I know most churches financially don't have a lot of extra money.
But hospitals?
But, you know, it might be worth taking at least a look and look-see to see what other communities are doing. And again, comparable sizes, I think, you know, if, but I...
And even if they aren't, like I said, is there a harm in asking?
It's being discussed.
Just to workshop three, I will be able to be here for about 45 minutes to an hour at the most due to our power commitment. I have to be at...
I will have, we're over by seven. I forgot that. That's my wife's birthday, so, yeah, I'm with you.
Well, this is, I have to be at this one.
You'll be okay with that?
I think we had that issue last year, isn't it?
She's actually watching, because I told her we'd be done by seven, so...
We're done. But the only other thing, I guess, is maybe the, some of the historical stuff that you gave us, is there a way to get that out? Because that's kind of telling our story again, of what our citizens are getting for their, you know, their taxes. And, you know, we hear it, oh, we're so much higher than everybody else, but not really. And then per capita, what we spend on police and what we spend on fire to other communities. I think that information needs to get out to our citizens, whether we have it scrolling on our homepage or Ashkosh Cable Media Services can put something together. I just think that, again, the average taxpayer in Ashkosh wants to know what their money's going for. And we talk a lot about it, but I think if we could get it out there and council members get a question from a citizen, you can say, it's on our website, or go click on Ashkosh Cable Media Services, you'll be able to get that information, because...
I think Ms. Larson has an answer for you, for starters.
Yep, so we will be posting our budget work packet or workshop packet on Hot Topics tomorrow morning on our webpage. And so that is a detail of all the pages that have been handled up, handed out this evening to the council.
And I'll talk to staff about highlighting it on my show.
Yeah, I was going to say, maybe in your city manager's report would be good.
Yeah.
Can we find out how many other communities, comparable committees, the fire department, the firemen are also paramedics?
Yeah, that's, it's an appropriate ask. It's a tougher ask, because you've literally got to go community to community and ask, but there's an apples and oranges issue.
Like a handful, but, I mean...
There's a bunch of them.
Click on like the Wisconsin State Salary page, and it shows whatever.
You've got to go through it more on a, just like you described.
Home mark type thing.
Yeah, you've got to do that. Thank you.
Thank you all.